Good evening, everyone. This is the Gottes Town Planning Board. Today is November 5th. We are meeting in part electronically, which we can do due to the COVID-19 outbreak and Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. There is a physical location here at Town Hall, but you can also call in to listen contemporaneously with this meeting. We have done so in accordance with the Governor's emergency order, and we are providing public access to this meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video, online, or by other electronic means through our webpage online or YouTube. The Planning Board is using this telephone conference line, and you can participate as a member of the public in this by dialing (603) 766-5646 and use participant code (785) 645 followed by the pound sign. The notice to the public of this meeting was previously given on the agenda, and the phone number was included. And if there is a problem during this meeting, you will please alert us by dialing (603) 660-5000. That would be if you have a problem hearing or seeing us in regards to the conduct of this meeting electronically. And if indeed you cannot access this meeting electronically, we will adjourn to reconvene at another date. All votes during this meeting will be taken by roll call, and we will start the meeting by asking members to identify themselves and note that they are present either in person or on the phone. There is also a requirement for members participating electronically to let us know whether anybody is in the room with them, though to this day I have not figured out why that is required. And if anybody wants to speak from the public and you've called in, hit *9, and we will be able to unmute you so you can participate. Having said that, I'm going to ask everybody around the room to identify themselves, and then we'll go to the members online. Joanne?
Joanne Duffy, Planning and Economic Development Director. Gail LeBrack, Alternate and Recording Secretary.
My name is Barbara Griffin.
I'm David Pearson, Alternate Member.
Nancy?
Oh, Nancy Larson, City Code Enforcement and manning the phones and the computers tonight.
Our electronic coordinator tonight.
Yes, very nicely said, and we have a few members on the phone.
All right, Peter?
Yes, Peter George Anderson, by myself, Selectman's Ref.
Thank you. Kimberly?
Kimberly P., I am by myself.
Thank you. Jim?
This is Jim Raymond. I'm mostly by myself, except when Jane walks through the room.
Phil was on the phone.
Phil, welcome.
Yep, Phil Devanza. I'm alone.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. The first item of business that we have tonight is our typical item, and it is approval of the minutes of our last meeting. That last meeting would have been October 22nd. Do I have a motion? And before we do this, we are missing two regular members, so both Gail and David will be voting tonight. Minutes of October 22nd, is there a motion?
Dave, first, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 22nd.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, Phil. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Phil?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kimberly?
I abstained, I was not there.
Jim?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. David?
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes are approved and adopted. Joanne, we have an item of business in regards to a recommendation?
Yes, we have a request that's been made through the Building and Zoning Department. Someone currently lives on Andre Street, and they're proposing to do some changes to their home. They're turning it from a split entry to a raised ranch. They're adding laundry, some siding, roofing, windows, a deck, a new kitchen, and a bath. And because they're on a Class 6 road, it's been sent over to the Planning Board to see if there are any comments. Those comments will be forwarded to the Select Board prior to them voting on this request.
Board members, you were given material in regards to this application. Joanne, it's my understanding that the building as proposed will not intrude any further into what is currently ongoing, is that correct? We're currently present on this site?
Right, correct. Okay.
Barbara, I have a question.
Phil?
Yes, and I'm just trying to get the page to the page, but there's a mention in there that the Code Enforcement Officer said that something, the deck doesn't extend beyond another portion of the building, therefore it's not subject to zoning?
Well, we happen to have our Code Enforcement Officer with us tonight. Karen?
It's the section that it is exempt from is in the Wetlands and Surface Water Conservation District buffer. There's an exemption clause in there that says if the structure predates adoption of that section of the ordinance, which this structure does, you can expand or extend the structure, the existing structure, as long as it doesn't encroach farther upon the wetlands or the surface water. And in this case, they had a deck in this location. It rotted, needed to be torn down, and this deck is going, if not in the same location, it may be extended out a little bit, but it's still not extending beyond the room adjacent, which is, I believe, a three-season enclosed porch.
Nancy, if I could ask, you just sort of said it rotted, so is the prior deck still there, or has it disappeared?
No, they removed it before they even submitted their building permit application.
Do we have any idea how long this deck has been gone?
I don't think it's been gone for very long, based on conversations that both I and the building official had. I can't, he may have a date, it's been, it hasn't been that long, from what I understand.
When this application came in in August, had the work up there already begun?
I can't tell you. I'm sorry, I don't know the details.
Okay, and so if, I'm a little confused, and Joanne, maybe you can help me? Normally, when these applications to do something on a classic road come in, they sort of come to us, it sort of goes to us and the Board of Selectmen before stuff is done? And when I looked at this, it sort of looked like we were doing this after the fact. Is that the case, and how did that happen?
I don't know if that's the case, but the...
Well, I think certainly, given the date of receipt of August 14th, it would appear that we're after the fact.
Sometimes people aren't aware of this. They just think that they can go get a building permit, so that's what they do. And then once they apply for the building permit, they find out that, you know, they shouldn't have torn it down, they need to go to the Select Board, they need to go to Planning.
I know that was the case with the deck, and the people who are trying to fix up the house, I don't know if they've done this before. And I think the building official has been trying to get information from these folks, and you can see the information that we've received is scant in details. But I think it's a matter of the, the building permit has not been issued, so they don't actually have a permit, and they won't have a permit until they've gone through the entire process, which, you know, includes the next step, the Select Board. But I think they, and they may not have needed a building permit to remove the deck, I can't say that, but, and I can't even say what if any work has been done on the interior of the house. I know the building official has visited the property and took some pictures, and it may be a situation, I think, of the, it was someone that maybe had seen work being done and notified the building official, and so it's been, he's been working with the property owners to try to get them to put all the details together as to what exactly they're looking to do on the property.
Questions from board members?
I have another question.
Phil?
Has anybody checked the flyover photos?
Yes, we have pictometry, and we check that with every property that comes in.
Okay, where was the deck? What did it show about the deck?
The deck is in the general location of where they're proposing the deck, the new deck. And you can see it on, if the GIS was included, GIS map was included with your packet, you can see it on the GIS map as well.
Yeah, I don't think they have that. David, maybe, because I don't think Nancy has what we're looking at, could you go to this piece in the packet?
Yes.
All right, and David, do you, can you see where there's this 15 right here?
51.5?
I don't know what that is.
Oh, the parcel is labeled 50.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. Can you show that to Nancy and see if she knows what it is?
That's an address for that tiny little parcel.
It's a street address.
So that is a separate parcel there?
Yes.
Yes, it'd be 50, 15 Andre.
And is there anything on that parcel? I'm not seeing anything.
Yeah, not indicated. I could go into pictometry, but I think I may lose...
Yeah, you might lose the electronic connection.
So I'm not really sure I want to do that, but if there was anything on that parcel, if it was developed even with a shed, it would show up on...
On this.
The GIS maps, because those structures reflect whatever date the flyover was done.
Okay. Other questions from board members? David?
Yes, Nancy, then, I know the documentation here is rather scanty as to engineer-type drawings, but the deck is essentially fully over the existing first floor.
May I see?
Activity. I mean, there's a, the original, the house has a foundation with the house and a porch, and now this deck is over the existing structure.
So the new deck is a 10-foot by 12-foot deck, and the...
In listening to the conversation, I get the impression the deck is on a roof of the porch.
Oh, no, it's on the ground. No, no, no. No, it's on the ground.
I got the impression that the deck is on the roof of the porch.
No, the drawing is not done very well, the way they, it kind of does look like it's on the roof, but no, it's on the ground adjacent to a three-season porch.
But, and I have to tell you that this application almost sounded like a demolition in that they're changing it from a split level to a raised ranch? That's a substantial construction change, so are we talking about a demolition?
I'm not the person to ask. I would venture to say no, because if it was, I, Mark and I talk all the time, we share the same office, so I'm pretty sure I would have picked up on that being the case because he would have required a demolition permit, and then he would, you know, require an asbestos report, and so on and so forth, and none of that was part of this application.
I'm hearing too many ifs in all this conversation. Shouldn't we have some more formal report from our departments or staff?
If you look under Improvement type on Page 4, where it says New Construction, Addition, Alterations, alterations is circled?
And demolition.
And demolition. But they're demolishing the porch, so...
Yeah, I think they probably...
That might be that piece.
But it's changed from split entry to raised ranch. Add laundry upstairs, new siding, roof and windows, I mean, you know, that's rehab.
Well, are they removing the entire roof to make it a raised ranch?
Well, it does say they're work, they're doing work on the roof. It's not specific as to whether it's being raised.
Well, usually when you do, when you take that, when you take a ranch or a cape and you make it a, you raise it, you remove the, remove all the roof rafters, and you put a second floor on it.
I mean, I guess I...
And you put new rafters above that.
I'm going to say I'm a little disappointed about the information. This has to do with whether or not we have a recommendation for a permit on a Class 6 road.
Well, this is the information that the building inspector...
Right, no, I'm just saying this is the information that we were provided, and I guess the options are to say we don't have enough information to make a recommendation, we recommend it, or we don't recommend it. I'm not hearing, seeing anything in the paperwork in regards to a change in use such that would affect the Classic Road status or the waterfront, but it is a little hard to really understand what's going on or when it went on. And it appears that this is being done by a developer, which is fine, but this is not a homeowner repair, so anyways. Any other comments from people online? On the phone, I mean?
Barbara, this is Jim. The last time we, this came, one of these came before us, we told them they had no comment because they didn't, the Select Board chose to not consider our comments on the preceding time. Here we have even less information. It seems to me we should say we can't approve or deny, we don't have enough information. And, or not approve or deny, whether we recommend it or not, we can't make a recommendation because we don't have enough information.
Is that a motion that Gail could write down?
It is.
Is there a second to that motion?
This is David, I'll second.
Thank you, David. Tim's missing tonight, he's usually our...
I was waiting for you.
Can you be more specific in what type of information you're looking for? Information on the interior changes, or...
I think that overall, there is a feeling we don't have information on what this project is. It's clearly not simply a renovation.
Well, if I, some of the questions that I have, I mean, when you say you're going to make it into a raised, I mean, what's the increase of the square footage? And what is it, the square, the square footage now, what's the square footage going to be later on? I mean, that's information the assessor needs.
It doesn't specifically say that it will be on the same footing as the house, so I'm sort of assuming that. There is a sheet that talks about how big the first floor will be as compared to the second floor.
I would like a confirmation that the existing foundation is, you know, there's no change to the foundation.
And that there's no required change in the renovation for septic issues?
Yes.
It doesn't look like it is, but...
Is the septic system adequate for the increase?
Because there's an existing floor plan on 8, and then there's a revised floor plan, so I'm not really sure if we're going from a split to a raised ranch, what that means. I mean, I think we can just send it to the Selectmen and say there's not enough information. And Jim's right, if the Selectmen are not going to be paying attention to what we're looking at, send it off. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion made by Jim, suggested by David, that we inform the Selectmen that we have insufficient information to make a recommendation either for or against the issuance of a building permit. I'll start calling the roll with the members present in the room. David?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Gail?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Peter?
I'm standing.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Jim?
Did you just call me? Yes, if you did.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, it wasn't, the microphone phone is a little further away tonight than it normally is. All right, Joanne, that appears to be the two... Kimberly, I thought you voted yes, was that right?
I did, yes.
Okay, thank you. Gail missed it. Joanne, I have that as being the two items that we needed to address with the vote, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, we have on our agenda tonight a master plan update. We have with us tonight Southern New Hampshire Planning. To go through the master plan update with us, we were provided a copy of the work, which has been done by them on our behalf in regards to this project, and all board members should have received a copy electronically, and I think in your packets actually this week, of the master plan. So with that, I'd like to welcome Southern New Hampshire Planning. You can come to the table if you want. You can stay, and please introduce yourself for the record. We know who you are, and we'll see what we've got here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cameron Pearlman. I'm a Regional Planner with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
And this is Sylvia Von AuLock. I'm the Executive Director of Southern New Hampshire Planning.
I'm the executive director of Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. So as the board recalls, we contracted with Southern New Hampshire Planning for the master plan update. Master plans are supposed to be revised by statute every 10 years. The decision was made to simply do an update, and we had discussions among the board as to what type of an update we would like to have. We've had some updates in the past that have been bigger rather than smaller. And Southern New Hampshire Planning has taken that direction. There were some outreach issues done. There was a resident survey. There were things done at Old Home Day. Old Home Day was a long time ago, but it was pre-COVID, and it just seems like it was in another time.
Doesn't it? I know. Can't happen right now like that.
And and there was also a public input session, which was run down at the high school. And as a result, we have an update that has some chapters that are deemed by statute and by the board as being important things to address. And Cam, you were our our lead point on putting this together. So if you want to just sort of take us through what we have here, and it'll give members of the public a chance to sort of know what the chapters are about. I don't know that we need to review the actual content because board members have all had a chance to review review it. So I'll just tell you from board members that what I'm hoping for is to be able to go through it. We have David Pearce's comments, if other board members have comments, and then to set a public hearing for this so we can move on to a final update to be adopted. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. I'm I'm so sorry, Barbara.
That's all right.
That's I do want to mention that.
If you hadn't said anything, I wouldn't have even noticed.
I I do want to mention that Diane Hathaway from from the library did also send over a couple of comments from two representatives from the library trustees.
And board members were provided that.
Okay, great.
I apologize for not mentioning that.
Okay, excellent. So, yeah, I can I I guess, yeah, I can give a kind of a higher level overview.
Just of what each of the chapters are.
Sure. So the the master plan, it is broken down into chapters. As Barbara mentioned, there are 12 chapters. The first one being public outreach and a vision. The second one being a community profile, followed by housing, recreation, economic development, education, energy, community facilities, an age-friendly Goffstown, conservation in open space, transportation, and then lastly, existing and future land use. So the public outreach kind of generally summarizes the outreach that we did with members of the Goffstown public. It, as Barbara mentioned, it that covers a survey, a community input session, and as well as an activity we did and had a little table at Goffstown Old Home Day. The section summarizes the results of the feedback we received at each of those events and provides a summary of overall themes from all of those events. And if anyone has any questions as I go through this, please feel free to stop me. So the next part is the vision. The vision is not developed because perhaps we could talk about it during this workshop. The vision should be kind of a an exercise that the planning board goes through together. The vision should be reflective of the various input from the community as well as the overall kind of themes and strategies of the master plan itself. So the next section is a community profile. It highlights things like demographics, school enrollments, and housing characteristics, employment sectors. It gives a kind of general overview of of what the town kind of looks like.
I really liked this page. I want to tell you it was I've actually used some of the numbers for something else already.
It's convenient, all of it in one spot.
And I think perhaps we could go through the comments after we go through all of this. Because I did I do have notes of for David Pearce's comments. So the next section is housing. It kind of gives a brief summary of just some trends in housing in Goffstown and provides strategies for the planning board, for the town as well. The next section, as I mentioned, is recreation. Again, it provides a summary of recreation activities and infrastructure and programs in town, and again, provides strategies for recreation. The next section being economic development, again, provides a summary of economic development, activities and growth, and just some statistics, and again, provides strategies. The next section being education provides an overview of the various schools in town with various enrollment and facility information as well as strategies. The next section is the energy section. This was, I think it was asked that since the energy plan was adopted in 2012 to kind of use that and build on it a bit. So it heavily highlights and summarizes the energy plan as well as provide strategies. The next section is the community facility section. It provides a summary and overview of different departments and facilities. This section as well, we did receive comments from almost every department. I think one outstanding comment would be regarding a strategy for the police department from someone from the department. However, every other department was able to provide comments here. The next section is called Age Friendly Goffstown, probably the only age-friendly chapter in a master plan in New Hampshire. This was kind of an effort that spans a little a few years back with AARP and Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission in the town of Goffstown, where a lot of this information was developed through an individual who worked closely with the town and department. So this builds on that and also provides strategies. The next section is the conservation in open space. This section. So this section provides background on conservation planning, and it also supplements the 2006 Open Space Conservation Plan developed by the Conservation Commission and also provides strategies. And also, you can see there's a map placeholder. Our GIS analyst is working now with Brian Ray. I do think he has some GIS layers that he's working through. So hopefully, by the next time you see this, there will be a nice colorful map right there. The next section is transportation. It kind of provides an overview of the in the transportation system regionally and locally in Goffstown, highlights different services and and the road system, and also provides some strategies. And then lastly, we have land use, providing an overview of of land use in Goffstown today and some strategies for moving forward. So with that, I guess I'm not sure if if we would like to review David Pearce's comments or if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Board members, does anybody have any sort of overview comments or in general before we talk about anything specific?
Barbara, this is Jim.
Yeah.
The yeah, the overview question is what is different substantively on our planning goals that's in this master plan? Rather than restating or re-presenting substance of the old master plan in a more attractive format, what's new and different in the age? Age friendly jumps out, but I guess it'd be useful if Cam could walk us through what the changes are in our general planning goals.
Sure. Well, I think I don't I guess we could go through each section. And I don't have the old master plan with me, but I do think, well, I think this master plan update builds on some of the recommendations that are still very relevant today from the, I believe, the 2005 or '06 master plan update.
I think the first place where the recommendations show up is in the housing section.
Okay.
There there's definitely more focus on trying to provide different types of housing overall versus, you know, having the single fam- the majority of the single-family homes that we currently have today. There's a focus on the accessory dwelling units, universal design, building codes, mixed continuing to promote mixed use.
Yeah, I think.
Really so much about rezoning neighborhoods, but just focusing in on the type of housing that's permitted.
Yeah, I think if I could just build on that just a bit. You know, this the plan, you know, from what if you look at kind of what we heard from all the different public outreach events in the survey and everything, you know, we hear things like, you know, people respect the rural character of this town and and they like to keep it that way, but they would also, you know, like to see additional housing or choices in town. So that's kind of a something we're trying to thread the needle at here of how do we how do we protect kind of the character of Goffstown while attempting to offer new solutions for, you know, housing specifically?
Other members? David.
Cam is somewhat touching on one of my comments because the conversation here is what does the town look like with additional housing built that would be permitted by all our present code? And Southern New Hampshire maybe 10 years ago, eight years ago, did a 100% build-out of our community. Every parcel was built according to how zoning and is would allow it to be developed with, you know, not too many waivers and. What does the town look like? And that picks up the this part of the conversation on, you know, additional housing units, whether they be single-family or condominiums or apartments or. Should so should there be a reference or pieces of information taken out of that 100% build?
Maybe we should just add it. Whatever the build-out is, if you've got it.
That plan had some nuggets of of wisdom in it as to what the town would look like. And this is this master plan is supposed to be looking at what the town would be.
Do you want us to add it as a reference or if it's a plan already done? That's kind of a whole new.
Is it a map or is it a plan? David, I don't recall, to tell you the truth, what it.
It was a document that beats this one, you know, thickness.
Oh, it was a okay, all right.
Well, this the one of the goals of this master plan was to make it very much like Manchester's master plan. And Manchester's master plan was exactly this sort of format so that it it wasn't meant to be a lengthy, deep document. And certainly, everything reflected that in the conversations, in the budget, all of that. So this is meant to be something that is easy to read, quickly referenced, just like Barbara mentioned, where she already has used some of the information. So it's supposed to be really an overview, a guide.
So I I commend you for accomplishing that because I I like the structure and the format and the simplicity of this. But I I believe, yes, it at minimum, it should reference that there's a plan that was done relatively recent and concerned what this town looks like if it was 100% built out.
So you can reference it.
If if there's look at the executive summary of all that. And if there's nuggets of information that would influence some of these chapters, then you need to reference it.
So we could add to your comments under land use. We're going to reference to a build-out study that was a build-out plan that was done. And the zoning hasn't significantly changed since then to impact what that would be.
And I do I should note that in the future land use section, the kind of the different areas mentioned in here in town and kind of what they would and kind of can look like, I think, does come from recommendations or builds on recommendations from, I don't know if it's the exact same build-out you are referencing, but in SNHPC.
In your in your archives somewhere, if we don't have it in this town hall, I I hope you still have it in your archives.
I'm sure we do, so.
We must have a copy upstairs.
Barbara, this is Jim. May I butt in for a minute? I just did anyway. The I remember what David is talking about. Yeah, it was a pretty striking document, and I'll try to look for it. But I'm trying to think back to our conceptual discussions on what the plan would look like. I believe in the current master plan, we have an appendix that we could put things like what David's talking about or studies or more detailed stuff in an appendix and not clutter up the the main document, which I agree with Silver and Cam is very attractively presented. I don't know if that was a plan now. I I don't like I don't like seeing that kind of data lost. You know, as David just there's some good stuff in the past. How do we preserve it? Maybe the master plan is not the place to do it, but it it was presented initially to guide our planning. So I think it's still relevant.
Okay, yeah, I think I I think you both bring up a good point, so I'll look into the.
Dig it out and.
I think it's from like around nine, not 19, what am I saying, 2006 or '07.
Okay.
I moved here in '07, and it was presented, I think, two years after that. So that's why I wrote in my notes, 2009.
Yep. All right, we'll we'll check it out. That's before both of our time with the commission.
Amy Kiesak worked on it. They did one for Hooksit. That's why I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, that's.
I know Amy had a part in it.
Okay.
The next area that is is basically a new area or a new chapter is the age. The next area that is, is basically a new area or a new chapter is the age-friendly section, which basically comes from the project that we've been working on with Southern New Hampshire Planning and AARP, where we were found to be the first age-friendly town in the state of New Hampshire. And there was a report done by Julia, who was working here for a time for administration, and she had done an extensive report on age-friendly and the benefits of being an age-friendly community. So there's a chapter devoted to age-friendly, so that's a completely new chapter.
Okay. I have been involved either directly or peripherally in pretty much the master plans and updates for a number of rounds at this point. And I think the thing that struck me about the outreach session that was done at the high school, when Jim mentions, what's the vision, what are people wanting to see? I have to tell you that I think my observation is, the vision of the public has not changed hugely through any of those cycles. People move to Goffstown in general for the rural character of the community and the fact that it still has centers that are people-friendly, whether it's the Pinnardville section of town or the Village section. They want to preserve the rural character. They would like to encourage businesses, but quite frankly, the encouragement of business and commercial development is not because they want it in their backyard, it's because they hope for a positive impact on the tax rate. And they're looking, you know, over the years, as compared to one of the, the first master plan I was up, involved in, we now have a lot more conservation land, we have the rail trail, which was not, was a sliver of a vision many master plans ago. And people are now very enthusiastic about those and want to continue down those paths. I mean, those were some of the themes we were hearing, and then in consistent with the aging of the state, a lot of people walking around going, where's the condo I want to move into, that's only one level, I mean. Which goes to, you know, some of the alternative housing choices that are being mentioned that Joanne said. I, I will say that I, I'm having a hard time putting my hands around age-friendly Goffstown. I don't know why, it's just, can we come up with another, I don't know why, it's-
That's what it's referred to by, like-
You know what it is, Barbara makes you think of the villages.
Well, because it's not just for older people, it's age-friendly, meaning for all ages, not just older folks.
No, I understand it, it's, I just have this vision of like a bobble-head doll downtown, you know, like, we're age-friendly. I, I just, it's the terminology, I don't know. I did think that there needed to be a reference to the fact that one of, a big asset in town is not mentioned, and that would be St. Ansem's College. I did not find a reference to it anywhere in the document, and well-
Did, I'm sure it's there, I read it, yeah.
Did you? I couldn't find it, so could you just make sure that that's in there?
Yes.
And I've also got a note that I put down, something else needs to be mentioned, but I can't read my handwriting, so there you go.
Is it under education, maybe?
I, I, I don't remember, but as long as it's in there.
It, it could be under, I'm sorry, I shouldn't know exactly where it is.
Yes, if, if we were Durham or Keene, you would find a whole chapter on the impact of a university in one's town.
Yeah.
I think there's definitely a recommendation in here to work cooperatively with the college and maybe-
Yes, that's what I recall.
More things together, because that's definitely lacking.
All right.
I, I know from meetings I've attended, Sylvia, at your organization, St. Ansem's have briefed you on their master plan going forward for 20 years. There was a, several gentlemen doing a, one of your monthly briefings.
Recently?
Oh, a year and a half ago.
Oh, I don't recall that either.
I don't recall that either.
That might have been the Institute of Art in match, I could be incorrect, but um, there is, there is a-
I'm not sure we ever- That, New, Southern New Hampshire.
Yeah, no, they, they don't recall that, James.
Well, it-
But you were, you do, so something happened.
Yes.
Yes.
And they do have a master plan, and I was surprised about the extent of where they envision their front gate to be going into a campus. It's, it's a half mile from where it is now.
You mean in the future, where they envision it to be?
Yes, yes, yes.
And where would that be?
Just say it's considerable, it's a considerable distance from where it is right now.
Barbara, this is Jim again. The, the challenge of in our planning hat is balancing the goals. For example, as you mentioned, people want to preserve rural character. They also want to increase commercial development, but not in their front yard or backyard. Then we, we also, we want a mix of housing, includes multifamily. I might note, recent zoning changes in the municipality to our southeast has certainly not encouraged that form of housing there, which predicts will get more here, but they're not, they're not compatible indirectly, but we have to balance them. So I guess I'm looking to a master plan that helps guide us in that balance between preserving rural character, recreational amenities, but allowing more self-storage facilities on all our commercial land, which seems to be what we're doing now, and having more mix of housing, which will include multifamily. You know, how do we do that? How do we balance it? Maybe, maybe this tells us, but it doesn't do us, doesn't help us in a planning role just to point out each one of those sort of in its own isolated chapter. It's how do we blend them together? And I don't have any answer to that, but I'm, I'm thinking the master plan should express what our philosophy is and how we do that and what the overall goal is.
That would be a perfect, really, item for the vision. And Jim, I think that you sound like you might even start writing that right tonight, because you've-
That would be Gail, Gail has started writing it.
Sylvia, I would, but I got some stuff to do for the town of Deerfield first that you might-
Yes, I know you do.
If, if I can add something?
Phil?
Yeah, on Jim's topic there, you know, the, the mention of, you know, planning and the self-storage facilities, that, that's, a, a lot of the applications that come before us, they are driven by the econ- economic times. And we don't actually have a control over that, because we respond, we respond to the applications that are, that are driven by what our, our master plan, what our regs are, and the economy. And I don't know, you know, so, so that's what's difficult when you, you say, well, gee, you, you have a lot of storage facilities, but storage facilities aren't in your master plan, so, you know, it's not that we're poor planning, it's just that we, we react to those, that situation, to, to the, to the, to the environment.
Barbara, may I give a, this Jim, may I give a, a quick response, and I'll kind of settle this tonight, but one of the goals of an earlier planning board is sort of the workplace stay philosophy, that we create work and potential jobs in Goffstown, so people could live in Goffstown, work in Gofftown, play in Gofftown. But if we use our commercial land for storage facilities, we've defeated that. We, we're using our, we don't have much, and if we use it for business uses that don't create jobs, we haven't met one of the purposes. It's a little different than some of the performance-based zoning that we see in, in the town of the southeast. But I think that is an issue that we should at least think about. We may conclude we can't do anything about it, it's just that the economic waves wash over us. But, but we are seeing that what we thought a few years ago, several years ago, would happen with our commercial land is not happening. And maybe we revisit how we describe, you know, the commercial uses we're going to commit, which I know is not a free-market approach, but we are planners.
Jim brings up some good points, and I would encourage board members to look at the land use strategies that are part of the land use section, because they talk a little bit about what you might want to consider doing to address those things. I mean, my recollection of the master plans in the past, and I did not review them for tonight's meeting, is that it is a, a really a compilation of current data and conditions with some strategies and where you want to go. And I, I think that maybe if everybody could take a stab at the visions statement with Gail, maybe I'll ask Gail to send out the little beginning of it that we just had.
From Jim?
And, yes, and see if people want to try to add something on to it, and then maybe Joanne and Cam and I can try to sort of consolidate that to a vision statement from looking at other ones, because it's hard enough to come up with a vision statement we all agree on when we're all sitting here in this room, never mind when half of us are home electronic, participating by phone and, and tonight. And I'm sure board members would like to have an opportunity to even look at the master plan more. So are there, Jim brings up some good points as to how we want to frame this. Are there any other general comments in regards to the master plan? And if not, what I'd like to do is sort of address the comments, not specifically, but sort of, yeah, these look reasonable and they can be incorporated in. I don't think we need to go page by page with Cam as to some of the comments. And I've actually scribbled some comments on a copy that I'm just probably going to hand to Cam and stay after the meeting and make sure he can, or have him look at it before he goes to make sure he can sort of read my writing, and then he can give me a call.
Okay.
Because I've, I've found a couple of places where you had a section and you had the top four things, but it didn't match the top four things that were in the, the second page when you did the summary. So just so things sort of line up, and some other types of comments. Anybody else have a general comment before we take a look at David Pearce's comments? All right.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, David.
Page three, please. Cam, in the middle column, in the middle of the column, housing characteristics, mobile homes, 136. I, I do not believe the assessor has a category called mobile homes. So that needs to be aligned with how we assess properties. I think you will find, you, the term manufactured homes, where there's perhaps 300 or more. And there are manufactured homes beyond those in Medfield. Go up, further up in that middle column. I have a problem with saying medium earnings based on those 16 and years older. I have a hard time believing that 16 to 18-year-old adults are building homes, buying homes, or establishing businesses.
Well, my guess is Cam did not make up that age range, do you recall where you got that from?
So where, why, why is 16 such an important age that we need to look at their earning power?
No, that's a, that's a fair question, so that is a, that comes right from the US Census as, as a category, and that's just the year they start, I guess, accounting for that. And I can look into if there's, if I can exclude.
Would, would the board think if he looked at age 20 and above, that might be a more significant area of adult?
Well, I think that Cam is taking, Cam is not going to have the ability to, to do anything other than pull this information from Census. I can't believe Census is accumulating, or the ACS survey that they do, or AFS, what, community, American Family Community, ACS survey that they do. So you're going to, so see if you can find something that might be a little less, more legal adult bottom range, and you may or may not be able to do it. Well, if the board has to pick between 16 and 21, does the board care? I'm not hearing the-
No, no, I, I, it's fine with me, the only, only thing I want to make sure is that we're not just changing the title.
Right.
Because that calculation of the median earnings will include that range of 16.
Well, yeah, I would expect Cam to simply look at the census data provided, either through the fan, the survey or the actual census data, and pick the category that would fit based on the comments.
So you're looking for the next, next one up?
The next tier of, of age that may be more appropriate to an adult that's buying homes.
No, that's, that's fair.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, putting burdens on our school system, which I don't, I hope 16-year-olds aren't doing that. Okay, third column on that page, land use. The title is wrong, because everything under that is land cover. To me, land use is what we do in zoning.
Yes.
Retail, you know, agricultural, residential. I'm sure that this page has something on a breakdown of residential, agricultural, industrial, retail, zoned parcels.
Yep, yeah, I do, I think David brings up a good point, and I, we are kind of, not kind of, we are running these numbers for the actual use. So this is data that we had, and David makes a good point, and so I think-
Thank you.
Look, just to verify, I want to be clear, you'd rather see housing, like, something like what's above there? Employment sectors, but just in land use? So you'd rather see-
Unless-
Residential, commercial, institution-
Unless there's others here in, in the room online, land use, to me, implies the use of the land, not the cover of the land.
No, I can appreciate it, I just want to be clear what you want to see.
And so I would like to see some information on the, how land is zoned to be used.
Well, wouldn't, David, I, you're right, that you have a land use and then you have land cover right underneath it. Wouldn't land use be in the land use section? I mean, I actually sort of looked at that list and thought it was sort of interesting in regards to the community profile. I mean, I suppose we could do both.
Yes, I think, I don't think, I don't think it could hurt to have both. If, if the board finds that this is an interesting bit of information that says something about the town, you know, then, then it can stay, and if not, it can change to what David is talking about regarding more actual use of the town, and how it kind of relates to zoning, but I don't think it would be zoning categories, but use. So-
Because even though it's zoned a certain way, it's not necessarily being used that way. Well, one thing we could do, just to, for ease, change the title to land cover.
Get rid of the land use.
And then if we find something on land use that's a similar breakdown on percentages, I don't know, Joanne, if you have that or the- I think the assessor would be able to provide that. Maybe you can get that from the assessor? Yeah. Then Cam can put that in the land use section, does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yes, this is Jim again. I, I agree, the, in the past, we have seen depictions of how, by percentage, I think, or land, or how our land is used, which shows most of it is in the agricultural zone, which means from a land use perspective, a lot of the stuff we talked about needing commercial multifamily is squeezed into a very narrow corridor. So it is useful to have this list, whether you call it land type, I like land use, because I don't see it as zoning, but it's just a name. And then also a, a depiction of how we are zoned, because one of our goals should be to make our zoning match what our- match what our, what I'll call our broader land use goals are. Because right now, we, yeah, maybe we, we're not correctly zoned for where we want to go with our land use. Does that make sense? If I rambled on that one?
Yes.
I think I heard that, and I'm going to look to Joanne to see if assessing has how, and I don't know if zoning department has it, but how the town is broken down into different zones. That's what I'm hearing also. So there's two different things I'm hearing you want. One is a breakdown of what's actually out there, how much residential, how much commercial, et cetera, and then how it is zoned and those percentages, because that's different.
Correct. Because one of the things we do as a planning board is recommend changes to zoning, both uses within the districts, but also the district lines. And we may conclude we don't have enough of something, a residential or commercial, and change it.
Sure.
Or not. But I, I think you need to see what the demand is compared to what land we have available for it.
So whatever, Joanne, you guys can come up with, we're happy to put in.
Okay.
All right, David?
It, I, I would just like to add, perhaps we could have a chat with Zach on that, too, because I think Brian is, in some of those layers, some of that information may be in there. And it is something Zach has just recently done for another town. So I think we, we could take a look at that before, you know, asking for additional information, if that makes sense to you.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, page four, please. The bar graphs in the lower left of page four, they go up through housing permits of 2018. I would like to see a column for 2019 added.
Okay.
I believe that's a, probably a very solid figure and, and should be added.
Based on your land use section, it's 33. Well, because you've got building permits on page 20.
Okay. That will be included on the housing section.
On, jumping forward to page six, please. A number of bullets on the right-hand column. The fourth one from the bottom, work with Hillsborough County to develop county-owned property along Mass Road. There should be a reference in just continuation of their sentence referencing a date of their master plan, which was accomplished, Barbara, you must remember, 2000.
This year, 2008.
Once again, it was 2009, 2010.
Eight, yeah.
And they had specific, you know, goals in mind. It would do no harm to reference that, that it's available.
Absolutely. I think, I think that's a good point, and that will be added to this. And also, just, it does get mentioned and expanded on a bit in the, in the land use section. But I, I think that's a great point.
And then we've, on that page, we've also discussed if it's appropriate for that page, a reference for the build-out plan for our town, but that, you know, that could be picked up in several other chapters. Page eight is education. There should be, there's space here. Add some comments about the SAU's use of 100 acres of land that they purchased a year and a half ago. What the impact, what that would be in our planning strategies. Very basically, it's going to be a campus with many activities, athletic and buildings.
Okay.
Do they have a strategic plan date that we might reference on that?
Not, there was a committee recently, but I don't know that they've ever completed or studied.
I think that COVID sort of brought a lot of that work to a halt. There were a couple of subcommittees.
That a year and a half ago, they bought 100 acres of land for future development of, you know, schools, school activities.
Adjacent to the high school.
Okay. Needs to be a part of our thinking when we're aware that the school system is expanding and the athletic facilities are expanding.
Was the school administration and board had provided a copy of this section?
They, they were involved in this in the beginning, and they were working with Cam.
Yeah, but when you sent this out to department heads for comment, did the school get it?
I don't think so.
Well, then maybe they should get it.
Okay.
Barbara, this is Jim. I, I was talking to a school board member at the elections on this issue. You know, they're not as far along with the COVID, but the town side tends to ignore the school side and the school side, the town side. I, I don't know how you can do a master plan for a community without the school, the school boards involved in this, like.
Yeah. They were involved. I just don't know that they've seen this last draft.
No, it'll be sent to them for their, it's more appropriate for them to be, David's comment about the town's purchase of property is appropriate, that it needs to be included in here as a piece of what they can vision for the future from a school standpoint. So, Cam, you can send this section to the school, and do you have?
Joanne will send it.
Oh, you'll do it. Fantastic. You know the contacts. Perfect.
But I, but I think we need some follow-up with them. You can't just send it to them with just one more stack of paper.
Yep. You'll do that, Joanne?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Page, page 12 is simply a spelling mistake. Sixth line down. It was a water main extension from a grass mire. The word from is misspelled. So.
Where are you, page nine?
12.
Page 12.
Sorry?
But.
And where are you?
Sixth line down. A water main was extended from a grass mire. From was misspelled.
Did you see it? I don't see it.
I think, I, I do know what you're talking about, David. In the community facilities.
Yeah, there, there is, there are two pages 12. He's talking about the first page 12. I didn't even notice that either. Oh, yeah, I got it.
First page 12.
That's funny. Okay, so two page 12s.
Just make it 12.1.
Thank you. That's a great suggestion.
This, this page 12 would also be a good place, or maybe if it's the, to mention under community facilities is the sewer capability of our town, whether that limits or is beneficial towards development. And it's beneficial. So I think that needs to be stated. The Sewer Commission has a contract with our treatment facility in Manchester, and that contract allows us to run downhill so many million gallons per day. And we're at 42% of that capability with the contract we have. So there's ample growth available in sewer flowage going to the treatment facility. Once, that's 42%. Once, if I re, if Jim Raymond was here.
Tim, yeah.
He, Tim, Tim Raymond would have more knowledge than us, than I, but it's, when we reach 75%, then we have to have a formal plan from the Sewer Commission as to how we're going to help out on the capital improvements of the, of the treatment facility. So we're, we have a comfortable growth capability in our, in the sewerage that we send from this town into Manchester treatment facility.
Do they have a state, so do you want Cam to include some sort of statement regarding the 40% capacity? Well, I think that it, the fact that there is a sewer partnership with Manchester needs to be monitored and considered in regards to the amount of usage that we have. There have been a couple of blips in, in that relationship over the years, and the fact that it exists and that it allows us to consider expansion should be.
If you go back 10 years ago, we had no expansion capability.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil.
So you, the, to talk about the Manchester-Gulfstown relationship?
Well, the fact that the Sewer Commission in Gulfstown has a contract with our treatment facility in Manchester, and under that contract allows us to ship to them 2.13 million gallons a day.
Right. It's considered an intermunicipal agreement.
Thank you, Phil.
All right. Maybe, I don't know.
So that, that, is simply that allows future development without any immediate impediment with the, how the infrastructure of our town.
Okay. If you go to page 11, where public works under community facilities starts, you list the various things to include sewer infrastructure on, when you start talking about the public works facilities. And so maybe what you want to do is figure out a sentence somewhere to break out that, or include somehow in that sentence, that the sewer infrastructure is part of our intermunicipal agreement with Manchester.
Okay, that makes sense.
That provides, that will have the capacity to provide for significant expansion at this time, and then find some place to put David's things. And then you could put a bullet in the public work strategies to, to, you know, monitor and plan for the usage allocated in regards to this municipal agreement for sewer. Because there was a period of time where there was a lot going on in regards to what our capacity was.
Okay.
Barbara?
Phil?
Might not want it under public works, because public works here specifically mentions Public Works Department. Because the sewer used to be under public works and was separated out, and we created the Sewer Commission when it became, when, when the interceptor was built. So it's technically not part of, I mean, it's not part of the Public Works Department.
Yeah, I, 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 Phil, of course, I know that because I'm a Sewer Commissioner, but I, I sort of, to the public, it's all Department of Public Works. I just wanted to not get too serious on that one.
We can also consider it in economic development if you prefer. But I think I, I have to agree with Dave, just because, you know, people just think, oh, you know, they're flushing the toilet.
I mean, Public Works gets the calls. I mean, that's where.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, we'll.
See what you can do about it.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Perhaps, perhaps even your public works people already have something already written up in a plan about that.
On the, on the second page 12, on the right-hand column in blue is a box for age-friendly strategies, and I just, I can't let this go unmentioned. The first bullet down is 2.02 miles, not 2.39, of the rail trail remains to be improved.
We would expect nothing less from our rail trail guru.
You could put a July 2020 date after that if you want.
As of?
That's a bullet in time.
As of July 2020.
Yeah, no, I think you need to put that in, because Dave does a lot of work and gets grants and it expands. So I think, yeah, we need.
I think so, too.
If all goes well, that'll be one mile left in another year and a half. I had something, page 14, age-friendly.
The tax.
Oh, yes. On the left-hand column of page 14, second bullet from the bottom, send important information through the tax bill. Help me here. I don't know what a tax bill is.
You mean with the tax billing?
Yes. I think, so this was carried over from the, I think, some, some of the recommendations from Julia through the, that program. And I do believe that it was referencing being sent out with information like.
Information being sent out with the property tax bill.
Exactly. Yeah. So I, that, yes, I think that's a good point and can be expanded on there.
Sure.
So what's?
Make it clear that residents would understand that.
So you wanted to say, send important information with the tax bill, or?
Consider, maybe. Consider sending.
I mean, we've done it in the past here, so.
Yeah.
With tax billing, as that is, you know, a document sent to every household down.
Property tax. We all know what property taxes are.
Well, maybe not the 16-year-olds we're trying to kick out for our median incomes.
That's funny.
So I'm going to, page 15 is when I get through boring you here, my last comments. Page 15, bottom of the left-hand column, is a bullet that says estate and town-owned parcels are scattered throughout the town, which includes Wildfogle Forest and the state-owned Greg Falls Wildlife Management Area. I checked in with the Department of Game and Fish and Game. They have 124 wildlife management areas in the whole state. Greg's Falls is not one of them. I'm not sure we picked up that term.
Yeah, I think, so that, that was taken from a layer in Granite, and now that our GIS analyst is going through all of those listed in that layer and, and reviewing it with the layers provided by the town, I think that will be cleared up.
There is an area downhill from Greg's Dam on the north shore that is conservation land. And likewise, I'm not sure that there is an official place called Wild, Baldfogle Forest. I believe in some town literature, it's called the Baldfogle Track.
Yes, you, I, I, Joanne spotted that, too. She said, what, what is this? But, so again, that came from just how Granite listed it, but so, once we, again, review the town's layers, we'll be able to correctly name it.
And then come down one or two lines, you make reference to the Piscataqua Watershed Association. They have a new name now, Piscataqua Land Conservancy.
I didn't know that.
I, I should have. Okay.
Over on the right-hand column, third line up, you've got the, in capital letters, ARM. But I can't understand the word to the right of ARM.
I'm sorry, can you?
Right here. ARM, and then Griffit.
Ah, okay.
And then just go down two lines, the last sentence, additionally, the commission recently celebrated. The word recently isn't, isn't appropriate word for something that's supposed to last 10 or 15 years.
Yes.
Why is it in there?
Do we know the year?
Yes, I do.
Oh, good. Offhand?
No, but I have it saved from a report that they did, so.
I just wanted to test that.
It, it must have been from 2018 or 19, I think, so.
Okay, so that's all it needs, it needs in.
Don't start a sentence with must have been and end it with I think.
You're right.
Just say, I'll find it.
Is this the lawyer speaking?
I spoke too quickly, so, I spoke too quickly. So turn to page 17. Right-hand column. Just above the whole list of bullets, you make reference to spending 1.6 million. Is that, I believe that's annually.
Yes.
Important word.
This is on the, under the Gulfstown Road Plan. Yeah, I can, I will. This is on the, under the Gulfstown Road Plan, yeah, I can, I will, uh, be more specific there, David.
Thank you, Barbara, for allowing me to share all this boring.
So, 1.6, that's, is that a one-time, or?
Annually.
It is annually.
Yeah, I, I marked per year, question mark, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Barbara, I have a motion that we don't allow more than two engineers on the planning board at any one time.
Well, so far, we're skating that same motion for lawyers, so I'm just gonna move on to the next item. All right, um, we also received comments from the library trustees, um, there were some general comments, there was a typo, um, there was a, a comment about, um, the increase in traffic from development, um, and there was a question in regards to, um, whether or not we meant in reference to working for the library with DPW, whether or not DPW had a role in our building project, I guess, I, I just, I didn't participate, I didn't view it as having a role, I viewed it as a supportive.
Yes, that, and I can clarify that, uh, yes.
Okay. Um, and there was a suggestion to specifically put in, um, some sections about finishing And I don't know whether we want to have a discussion on that, I mean, I, you know.
Did it come up in visioning, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I mean, sidewalks was one of the things that people, they wanted more sidewalks, that was something that came up, but didn't specifically.
Use the word finish.
Well, yeah, and this is specific to, basically a one-mile radius to the library. And so, that's not something specifically mentioned in here, which is why I think they, they brought it up.
They wanted, they wanted something in regards to the.
This is Jim, I have a suggestion that, I mean, maybe it's in the age-friendly category, but it's the general goal of a walkable community, you know, I don't think the master plan should be necessarily stating specific, maybe it can, but, you know, we're gonna have 1.5 miles of sidewalk on roads, but we want to promote a walkable community and a bikeable community and all the other mix, cause I'm, I'm mindful, we look at, you know, transportation, that section, and it's typically focusing on motor vehicles, but some of us ride our bikes transportation, or walk, and, um, you know, make sure that gets.
Well, there is that section, I don't know if you saw it, Jim, on complete streets, so that is mentioned in transportation, which has to do with walkability.
Okay, I was looking at this, I can, the second page, which is not, the page 18, yeah, right, okay, I, yeah.
Okay. All right, so those are the library-related comments. Joanne, did we get comments from other departments?
No, we haven't received any other comments.
And you're gonna send this over to the school?
Correct.
All right, do board members have any other comments? Okay, I, and Kim, I'm just gonna give you my copy with my scribbles, so that, and some of it was what, I think I found a couple of typos that maybe David didn't catch, and I had some ordering, and I draw arrows, cause I think things need to be moved around, and you can take a look at it and see what you think.
Okay.
All right. Um, Joanne, what's, what's the next step on this?
So, the next step would be to hold a public hearing, um, which, let me just get my, I wrote down the dates here. So, uh, so today is the 5th, we have a planning board meeting next week on the 12th, and then the following week is Thanksgiving, or that's the week after. Let's see, so today's the 5th, the 12th, we have a meeting, um, the 19th is open, the 26th is Thanksgiving, and then if we go into December.
Well, I mean, let me just say, I think we have to go into December, we're passing, Cam, some changes to be made, you need to contact the school, he needs to update this, and you want to have it in a form where hopefully we've caught the typos, and I want to give board members an opportunity to have input in the visioning statement, that Gail is gonna send out the beginning, and we're gonna get comments back and, and do that, so I think we are talking about December.
Okay, so December 3rd, um, is the, the visioning session with Strong Towns, that's at 6 o'clock, December 10th is.
And is that something that's occurring here?
It's a virtual meeting.
Oh, yeah, what am I, prethinking?
December.
But is that something where, I, I guess.
I would assume you, you will be invited, yes.
Is what you're saying, okay.
December 10th is a regular planning board meeting, and, uh, December, I'm sorry, December 10th is the first hearing on zoning changes, December 17th is a regular planning board meeting, and then we're into the holidays.
Well, you talked about, you've got on your proposed agenda, December 10th for a zoning, for zoning amendment, public hearing, do you want to allow any applicants at this meeting, we could schedule this for a public hearing and not allow applicants, and make the applicants go for the 17th.
Yep, we can do that.
And that's about a month.
We could do it on the 17th.
The closer.
Why?
If we want public participation, I would rather have it two weeks before the 25th, rather than one week before the 25th.
Okay.
So, the 10th, we should be counting on coming back?
Shoot for the 10th. Board members, what do you think of that plan?
That's fine.
And, and mark down your calendar for, apparently, December 3rd, cause it sounds like you're gonna be getting an invitation for another meeting.
And December 17th.
Is our, is our regular planning board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Lots of meetings.
All right, do you, Cam and Sylvia, do you have any questions for us on this?
Can we, no, I think we have a, a clear route, but I wonder, just so that it doesn't linger too long, can we, uh, cause certainly we want to wrap this up, right, everyone does, um, is it possible that you can get your visioning to us in two weeks, would that be?
Oh, yeah, my expectation is that it would go to you to be included in what is going to public hearing.
Yes.
Great.
All right, so if we can just say, uh.
Well, why don't board members, um, we have a, our only meeting for the rest of this month is next week?
Is, uh, December 12th, which is next week.
November 12th.
I'm sorry, November 12th, which is next week.
So, why don't, Gail, if you could email out that visioning piece, send it to Joanne to send out to the, and we're gonna do it next week at our meeting.
Oh, beautiful, beautiful, okay, and, um, we'll know from Jo, can you CC Cam on the school board?
Sure.
So, we know, you know, if they CC everyone, then we'll get that info back earlier?
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
I would think by then, also, we'll talk to Zach about, I believe we're talking about the conservation map and existing land use and.
Future land.
Future land use, so those were the three.
And a, and a kind of a, a transportation system map.
Like bicycle, walking, that kind of thing.
Yeah, um, with, with what layers we have, so it might not be every sidewalk.
I don't know what you mean by transportation.
It'll be a, a, kind of a general road map.
Oh, a map?
Yes.
Just a map, because there's, you know, in the transportation, I, I had suggested it, because there's so many references to different intersections and, you know, I just like to know where I am, that's always helpful, don't we all, right? So, um, yeah, and then we can include the rail trail.
Right.
You know.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you in a month.
Okay.
Maybe by then, we'll actually know the election results, what do you think?
We're gonna find out tonight.
I doubt it.
I don't think so, what was it, 30-something days in?
I, I heard.
It was 30-plus days for the Bush-Gore election, it was over 30 days.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, Joanne, appears to be proposed zoning amendments, we have a workshop, we have our zoning code enforcement officer with us, and we have a package that has proposed zoning amendments, there are not a huge amount, and what follows is, we have, what is it, five? We have a proposal, oh, no, it's, some of them is the word, there's definitions and other ones, there's nine, and then what follows, the actual proposed changes is what you would actually change in the, the zoning ordinance, so, Joanne, why don't you take us through it on a summary basis, cause I don't think we need to read brew pub definition out loud.
Okay, so, um, within the last few years, there have been a few people that have come in that are, were interested in the possibility of, um, starting up either a type of brew pub or a distillery of some sort, um, s- some kind of, uh, manufacturing of, uh, beverages which are considered to be, have liquor, and, um, we, we didn't have anything in our zoning ordinance that specifically addressed those, however, we did feel at the time that they would most likely fall under manufacturing, and, and they were looked, basically, I think one was looking to go in the commercial area, the other was the industrial area, um, but the more we, we talked about it recently, it would be good to actually identify them in our zoning ordinance, so that if someone were interested to come into town with this sort of use, that it would be clear as to what exactly would be allowed, and whether they would, um, would be able to have things, uh, like a restaurant attached to it, and what the limitations would be. The state has several definitions which we're, we're definitely referring to the state RSAs that cover that type of use, um, and we thought it would probably be best to have the breweries themselves limited to the industrial, but the nano breweries and the brew pubs could go, um, also in the, um, commercial areas, so, we just laid out, um, what we felt was workable and wouldn't completely disrupt things in certain zones, um, hoping too, that we may even be able to possibly attract some of these sorts of businesses, um, they are very popular, especially with the younger folks, and some towns have actually, their business use has really, uh, taken off once you have something like this in your town, so, I mean, that's just something to ponder over and see if you like it, if, if not, I wouldn't be offended, um, but, you know, I'm just trying to get it out there for conversation purposes, and see if you'd like to go through with it.
So, Amendment 1 is the definitions which have been taken from the state.
Correct.
And Amendment 2 is the actual, um, industrial district change.
Brewery and nano brewery.
3 would be the brew pub and the nano brewery, which are smaller uses, um, allowing them to go into other zones, uh, like commercial and village commercial and commercial industrial flex, with the, with a conditional use permit. And then if you go to your, you have actually, 1 and, and 2 in regards to language, 1, 2, and 3, you have attached the actual changes that you would propose to the document itself.
Yes, so that, I have them numbered.
To go along with.
To go along with the actual change, or the Warren article, I should say.
Right. Okay, board members, any comments in general on the, the concept of adding this as a defined and permitted use in the zoning ordinance?
Uh, this is Jim, having just stopped in at the Concord Craft Brewery two nights ago to stock up my refrigerator, I think it's a great idea, but, uh, the state has numbers exceeding 2,500 barrels, exceeding 2,000 barrels, I, I don't know what that means in real life for a, the, the business, um, but those are just numbers to me, and I, I, I guess I'd like to have some sense of what, what that means in terms of, you know, the brew pubs we actually see, is that a big number, a small number, you know, what does it mean?
So, like, an actual brewery can go up to 15,000 barrels.
No, I think, he understands the words and the barrels that are in there, but he's trying to.
Envision, what, you know.
Vision, what does 15,000 barrels?
Concord.
As far as like the size.
Highly, but I don't know what their production is, so I, we don't want to set an arbitrary number that really doesn't match what they're doing in fact, if it's going to restrict them unnecessarily. And I don't want to just pick a number out of a statute or something, and not know what, what it really means for.
What's a community that a board member knows that has a couple of these?
Then I can find out.
I could do some more research and buy some more beer, but somebody should probably do it a little more knowledge than me.
Comparisons.
Yeah, but after a couple of beers, we won't care what kind of knowledge you've got, so it'll be great. Do you want some comparisons of some surrounding, uh, places that I could say, you know, so in this place has the ability to. Joanne, let me ask board members, somebody give me a town or city where you know that there's a brew pub, either a brew, a brewery, or a, a, you know, brew pub eating brew place, somebody give me a town.
Did you say Littleton?
The answer is in Concord, the two new ones, Concord Craft Brewery and.
All right, so Concord, write down, Concord.
You also have one in Hampton.
Hampton, is there one in Dairy, or London Dairy?
There's one in Henneker.
Nutfield, where's Nutfield?
That's Dairy, I believe.
Dairy, all right, so why don't you contact those three communities to get an idea of what?
And there's some in Manchester.
Those sizes, I'm thinking those other cities might be easier to get the information.
Find out the, the square footage of such an industrial plant, is it, you know, 20,000 square feet, or is it a 50,000 square foot plant that has enough space to make 2,500 barrel a year?
I mean, Jim said there are a couple in Concord, there's probably somebody up there that's, you know, been involved in it recently, and you call one or two people and you'll know that, cause, I mean, I don't have a problem with the idea, I think it's a good idea, and I can think of a, a few places in town that it would be an appropriate use of space. What about other board members, does anybody have an objection to it as a concept? I'm not hearing any, okay.
Not at all.
So, we'll see what you can find out.
Okay, sounds good. Number four, the law changed this year, um, currently, when we advertise a public hearing, such as a master plan change, or changes to your site plan regulations, or zoning change, we have to post a notice in the newspaper, um, the zoning board also has to post all of their public hearings in the newspaper, and it costs quite a bit of money. They changed the law this year to, um, allow communities to remove that requirement, and in its place, to allow, uh, notice on the website itself, it has to be on the homepage, you have to be able to see it clearly, um, but I did talk to Derek about it, and it would be a great cost savings, as far as the budget goes. The only other thing that would need to be changed, if you agree with this, is your rules and regulations, and I think probably zoning needs to do that too, um, because it states in there that you have to place it in a newspaper of general circulation. So, this is just something that the, the law now allows for, if you'd like to go that route.
Board members.
I like the idea.
I, I never stake in the heart of newspapers, but, you know, legislature has permitted it.
Well, I mean, the reality is.
For hearings or meetings?
Pardon me? Sorry, I was talking.
For hearings or meetings, or both?
Just hearings, so, your, your hearings do not need to, your meetings do not need to go in the newspaper, only the hearings that you hold for changes to your zoning, uh, your development regs, uh, things like the master plan, those currently. things like the master plan, those currently require public notice in the newspaper. Your, your normal, regular meetings do not require notice in the newspaper.
But ZBA does, right?
But ZBA does, and that was just the way the state law was written.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll keep that on there.
So, I, well, I'll be interested to hear public comment on it. I mean, there might be people who think, no, I get it in the newspaper. I think one concern is, is that there's not going to be a newspaper of general circulation in this town soon.
This currently goes into the union leader.
Right, but that's what I mean. I'm, okay.
Number five, Connor is here.
Can I back up? Just, I, I'm, as I think about some of the older people in town, I'm, I'm not as thrilled with this as I might be.
I, I'm not particularly in favor of it, but I think we should go ahead and have the hearing on it. It's allowed by statute.
Just think it cuts, it assumes everybody is looking at, and people don't even have, still don't have computers. My elderly relatives don't, so I, I have some reservations then.
Gail. That's the note that I wrote, is that there's a lot of people that don't have internet access or don't have computers, and they could be relying on the newspapers.
And I still can't navigate the town's website to find the notices anyways, so there you go.
Well, it would have to be on the homepage. That's one of the requirements. But I understand what you're saying about people who don't. So, do you want to leave it on for discussion?
No, I think you can leave it on, but I, I'm not sure it's something that everybody's gonna embrace as a change.
Okay. Can we skip the next two, two, and go to number seven? Connor's here. He's just on his way down.
Okay.
Now, number seven is Nancy.
So, this is, the amendments that I'm proposing are largely housekeeping amendments. So, number seven-
Connor, you can come up and sit right at the table if you want. Thanks for coming down. Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. I, I didn't know if you were watching us or not. I would have called you sooner.
All right, Nancy is the floor.
So, in the, the section three for allowable uses, it says, "Single and two-family dwellings, more than one single-family dwelling or more than one two-family dwelling may be located on a single lot only pursuant to open space development." But in our zoning ordinance, some years ago, we redefined multifamily developments to include more than one duplex. And we don't require those developments to be on an open space layout. So, there's just a little inconsistency in the ordinance. So, I'm just proposing to clean it up so it, it just refers to more than one single-family home can only be located on the same lot if it's in an open space development. And then in the section on open space developments, there are other restrictions in whether it's necessarily even allowed based on the lot size. So, it was just a way of cleaning up that, that sentence.
Okay. Any comments on that? Any objection to going forward with that as a proposed change? Okay. All right, thank you, Nancy. Eight.
Uh, number eight, this has to do with the Table of Dimensional Regulations and that, that reference, it's, it's in the footnote, and it says, "Zero yards as part of a condominium project or zero side yards in the village commercial district with masonry construction." And so, uh, many months ago, I had done some research for another project where I needed to know where this came from, because the developer was asking if they could do zero yards, you know, zero yard setbacks. And I went all the way back, read through the meeting minutes, read through the workshop information. I, the only thing I found was just a, a board member's scribble note that seemed to suddenly appear in the next meeting as a suggested zoning amendment. And I've been involved in a couple of projects where a zero lot line makes sense. I don't know what the purpose of this is, and, and the fact that it doesn't really specify zero side yards, you can't have every side setback be zero, otherwise you're just gonna have one continuous building. And I don't understand where it matters whether or not it's a condominium project, because that's just a form of ownership, so I'm not sure why that makes a difference. The only thing that, that makes any sense to me in that sentence is that if you have any type of project that would have a zero yard setback, on one of the setbacks, you would want it to, those two sides that would be some feet away for the two dwelling units on two separate lots, presumably, it's just a scenario. You would probably want them to be of some kind of masonry construction, just for fire purposes, safety purposes. But in the end, I would just like to strike all that entirely and replace it with a reference to section four dot four for the minimum side and rear building setbacks for multifamily dwellings, because there isn't a reference to that particular setback requirement anywhere in the Table of Dimensional Regulations, and I think it could be very useful and user-friendly to have that reference there. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't strike the footnote, just replacing the language that's in there now.
So, if you want to get a sense of what she's talking about, it's actually easier to see it. Second page from the back in your package. She's got a copy of the Table of Dimensional Regulations, and the change that she's proposing is pretty clearly set forth, and it's a little easier to grasp in that form, actually.
Thank you.
Barbara, I agree with it. I never quite understood what that provision, that footnote four was intended. I didn't want anybody to know I didn't know what it meant. I never asked.
Thanks, Jim.
It never made any sense to me.
All right. Do, do any board members have any objection to going forward with that? Okay, we'll go forward with that. Number nine.
Number nine, let's see. Oh, yes, back to multifamily. So, this, again, for consistency, it's talking about, right now, it refers to, under section four dot four, multifamily dwellings, it refers to the maximum lot coverage under that first subsection. But when you go to the Table of Dimensional Requirements, we don't talk anywhere about lot coverage, 'cause that's completely different than what we measure, which is the maximum building coverage. So, I assume that lot was just maybe a word that wasn't eliminated and replaced with building coverage when this Table of Dimensional Regulations was-
Done.
Was done back in two thousand and six, I think. So, it just makes it easier for me to administer if the terms are consistent, so that's what that is all about. And, and then I, I think it's important to, also, to add maximum number of dwelling units per buildable acre, because that's also having to do with the dimensional regulations, and then, and setbacks are handled down in the next couple of paragraphs. But I just felt it would be important to add the maximum density allowed as well as a reference to the maximum building coverage, because then between those two items and setbacks, you've pretty much covered everything that you need to cover.
Sure you want to use the term "covered"? Okay.
Yeah, right. And, do you want me to go on to the other?
Yeah.
And the, the next one reads, "Currently, the dimensional standards for minimum lot size, minimum lot frontage, minimum yard requirements, and maximum height." I added "front" in front of "yard" and just struck requirements because the front yard setback isn't mentioned anywhere. But the, the, the unique setbacks that are applied to multifamily are only side and rear. So, presumably, you still have to maintain the front yard setback of the underlying zoning district, which is why I added "front" to that paragraph.
Yep.
And instead of, just for specificity sake, instead of minimum front yard requirements, I just put minimum front yard building setbacks, because, again, it's just consistent with the terminology that we use elsewhere in the zoning ordinance and in the Table of Dimensional Requirements. And then the last subsection there, one point three, the red language is to just be a little more clear that unless otherwise specified in section four dot three, Table of Dimensional Regulations, "The side and rear minimum building setbacks for multifamily structures shall be the greater of," et cetera, et cetera. That was to capture the other possibility that could drive the minimum setback for a multifamily is if you go to the Table of Dimensional Regulations and slide down to the commercial, the commercial industrial flex zone and the industrial zone, that's a third possibility for a setback, where if you had a multifamily development that is abutting a residential zoning district, then you also have to look at the number fifty feet as a setback. So, between the underlying side and rear setback, assuming that you're abutting the residential, and then you have to look at the building length that is most adjacent to the, or most parallel to that property boundary, and you take the biggest number. So, I just wanted, I didn't want to overlook that, because it's very easy to overlook. So, that's what number nine is about.
Any board members have any objection to going forward with the proposals for number nine, as requested by our zoning code enforcement officer?
As I, as I interpret, they're not upset to changes, they're just clarifying some of our lousy wording.
It makes it easier to administer. It's just, and I think it makes it easier for people to, you know, to, to use when they're designing a project.
You said it more nicely than I did.
All right. So, we'll, we'll go forward for a public hearing with those proposed changes. All right, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right. Joanne, I think we're back to number five with Connor present, correct?
Okay. Yep, and Connor is here to go over numbers five and six.
Well, and the fee schedule is also correct.
The fee schedule's not part of the zoning changes.
Right, but that's part of it. Okay. All right, Connor, welcome.
Thank you for having me back, everyone. So, the, the first one, amendment number five that I proposed, is proposed by the Gossam Planning Board, essentially specifying that the town will be allowing detached ADUs. It says, "An accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed within or attached to a single-family residence by adding or a detached accessory building on the same lot." And basically, right now, the way it's written, it specifies, "A single-family residence attached." And while there are a couple of, there are several detached units that are in town by variance, this just goes on to specify that detached ADUs would be allowed under the ordinance.
Connor, can I ask you, are we talking about a detached existing accessory building?
Uh, it doesn't specify.
So, so, I guess I ask that question, 'cause I know the ZBA just heard something in regards to an accessory building that was on the site, and they allowed something to occur that was in an existing building. So, I noticed that it wasn't there, so do you think that, and I'm looking at Joanne, that this means somebody could propose another building on a lot and say, okay, I, I want to put a dwelling unit in it, and then aren't we talking about two living units on a lot?
No.
Why not?
I mean, the first part to your question is yes. You are, this does refer to adding an additional structure. However, it would not be two separate units on a lot, because an accessory dwelling unit is not considered a unit that could stand on its own. So, if you wanted this to be restricted to existing accessory structures, I don't know if you used the word, would you use the word "structure" or "building"?
Yeah, I would, if I could-
I sort of disagree with what you just said, based on the wording. Nancy?
So, my thoughts are, replace the word "building" with "dwelling." I'm not sure if Connor, you, you meant to include the word "building" in there, so if there was a detached garage or a barn that you could, 'cause I know we had talked about that. Or would it allow for someone to build from the ground up? 'Cause I'm not sure legally, we, I don't know, I'm just, I don't know if legally we could, we could allow for one and not the other, if someone wanted to, to build from the ground up, if both would be detached, meaning if someone wanted to convert the second floor or, or even an entire detached garage, and it's still, you know, would not exceed the eight hundred square feet, which is the maximum permitted for an accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
If you had that situation versus a situation where someone wanted to build from the ground up, a, you know, a little cottage ADU, kind of a carriage house, ADU, and it still would not exceed eight hundred square feet, were, were you thinking that someone would be able to, to, to do that as well? That's what I was thinking that would, would be of-
Yes, so the option to build a new, a new dwelling unit is there. Like Joanne said, it wouldn't, to be specifically stated as an ADU, it would have to meet certain requirements that wouldn't make it multifamily.
But it's another living uni, I mean, it's a separate living unit. You sort of made it sound like it's not a dwelling. It's a dwelling. It's just a small dwelling. This is coming from the woman who loves tiny houses, by the way.
But it's, according to the state's definition, it's not a unit that stands on its own. It's dependent on, for instance, say if it's in an area where there's septic. It's, it would be sharing the septic.
All right. I think that's, that's a paper fiction. It, it is, it's a creation on paper. It is, for all intents and purposes, another living dwelling unit.
But it doesn't have the same, what am I looking for? It, it doesn't have the same, it, it's not a standalone house where it could stand there on its own. If someone came in, and just, this is a crazy example, but if someone came in and demolished the main house, it couldn't just stay there by itself.
Why not?
It has to, in order for it to be an ADU, it has to have a primary structure, and that's the accessory to the primary structure. Whether it be included as a, within or off to the side. If you're not in favor of having-
No, no, I'm just trying to make sure I understood what was intended by the wording.
And that makes sense, and part of the recent- And that makes sense, and part of the reason that I left it a little bit open-ended is because I didn't want to inhibit in any way, um, potential questions further down the road for the board. So like, if someone wanted to build a, a detached garage, but also wanted to include a dwelling unit on there, if we limited it to existing lots, but someone was going to build a garage, but wanted to put a dwelling unit on, you know, on the second floor, that would raise a lot of different questions and inhibit potential growth. So I think by, by putting it in this way, um, it'll, it allows for, for both options. And, and Joanne is, is correct in saying that if you were, like, if you had a two-story garage at the dwelling unit and you knocked down the main house, there would be, you would, you wouldn't necessarily be able to use that on your own because it would, you know, hook up to sewer, they're usually on the same electric lines, um, same electric meter, uh, same water meter if the, you know, depending upon the town. Um, so it, it's not designed to, to stand on its own. If it was able to, it would be multifamily.
Well, I don't know that we've done that with this, but okay, other board members.
This is Jim, um, I appreciate Connor's work and I understand what he's trying to do, it's a lot of a goal, but I have concerns about this and you touched on it, once it's there, we don't control who lives there. Um, and if you look at our, it's 5.2, accessory dwelling unit, it's very vague on what they describe as the interconnectedness of the primary structure in the ADU. Says it has to be, oh, that's the city area, but I don't know what in the world that means in real life. Right now, it has to be attached, or at least that means you're not dwelling over the lot. But once you allow freestanding ADUs, you're basically allowing multiple small houses on lots. And that changes the nature of our neighborhood and I, I have some concerns about that. Much as, much as, you know, I, I, you know, I appreciate Connor's goals and this would be a way to do it, but we also have a duty to protect our existing neighborhoods.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that the nice thing about ADUs is that it allows you to achieve both mandates where addressing the needs of housing capacity while continuing to maintain the character of the town and the neighborhoods that these are in. I mean, most of the towns, like, I, the last, the last meeting I mentioned, the town of Warner, where detached ADUs are allowed by right, and I don't think anyone in this room would disagree that Warner is not compact, uh, in, in the sense that it, it, I don't necessarily think that Warner has a density problem. And, and other towns too that have used ADUs and have allowed multiple detached ADUs by variance, which is what we're talking about here, like Hollis, also doesn't necessarily have a density issue, in their agricultural and residential zones. Um, I think the, go, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Andrew, go ahead, you finish Connor.
Yeah, I think, um, and I, ADUs are, 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 they're a lot different than, than building something like an apartment. Like, you, you had touched on the fact of you, you can't necessarily control who lives there. Outside of the major metropolitan areas where housing costs are astronomically high, like Portland, Seattle, San Francisco, we find that the most people that live in these dwelling units are either students that have just graduated college into a terrible job market, who are looking to save some money and live at home for a little while without living on top of their, their parents, or elderly, um, either elderly people who have lived in their homes for a long time, or the parents of their elderly parents, or the, the children of their elderly parents, excuse me, who need extra space to take care of their aging, their aging parent. Less than 5% of elderly people tend to actually move outside of where they, where they currently reside or go into nursing homes.
We can debate this at length and I, 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 to make my views clear, but Goffstown does have dense neighborhoods. And the issue is not the initial occupant, it's what happens when mother-in-law dies, as I said in the prior. And then they get this unit and they're going to want to rent it out, the question's to whom? So it, at some point, the initial user is no longer there and then you have the additional dwelling units on our, it could be small lot. So I, I think it needs some looking at.
Yeah, and if you don't mind...
I'm not saying don't go forward with the proposal, but I, I'm not in favor of it as written.
And that's, and if you don't mind, I'd like to ask a follow-up question of what would, in, what would you say the biggest issue would be should the primary occupant die? And what, I guess I'm trying to get the essence of like, what, what is the, the primary concern behind the unknown of what happens after? Like, do you have a worst-case scenario or...
The, a partial answer is, and Barbara, you can cut me off whenever you want, but section 5.2 as written was really a compromise. It allows them, as long as they're attached, on, partially on the theory that if you're building an ADU attached to your house, you're going to maintain close to control and it requires one or the other to be owner occupied, again, that's difficult to enforce, man. Um, but once you have separate buildings, you've lost that element of close control. And we live in a town with a certain transient population. Um, I can imagine, I, I don't want to cast aspersions at college kids, but a bunch of them moving into an ADU, that suddenly changes the nature of the neighborhood. And again, one of our goals is to protect the people who have invested in the houses in the neighborhood. And I, I, I don't see this as necessarily compatible with that. But, you know, I, give me some more, you know, teeth on it and maybe we can work it. But I, right now, I'm, I have some concerns.
Uh, other board members?
Hi, this is Kimberly. I, I would say that I agree with, uh, Jim's comments and I also think that, you know, it opens the door for youth for like Airbnbs and short-term rentals. Even though that's not maybe, um, you know, fully legal, it does, you know, the fact that you don't have to walk through someone's house, that there's an exterior entrance and a, and, and it's a detached unit really, um, you know, makes that sound really attractive.
Okay, Joanne, did you want...
Um, so currently, there have been people that have come into town, or I should say that have come into town, who own property in town and they've gone and received a variance to, uh, add one of these units inside an existing building such as a garage or a barn. I- is the issue have, with the board members that have spoken, having the ADU in a separate building altogether, whether the building is currently occupied as say a garage or a barn, or is the issue is building an additional building for one of these types of units, or both?
Barbara, may I answer that or do you want to shut me off? Uh, uh, I'll answer it while I can. Think of a range of possibilities, no ADU, ADU as part, attached to the primary res- building or structure and separate ADU. Some of us were, some members were not thrilled about ADUs at all. Some were willing to allow separate ADUs. An ADU that's an attached is a, well, a compromised position that accomplishes some of both. And that's not an unreasonable place to be. Connor's suggesting we move all the way to, the, um, oh, my, my right wing on that or left wing, but the, and, and maybe we, we can go there, but I, I'm not sure right now, that we have that need or we have sufficient, um, sense of what the impact could be on our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess I would just sort of follow up, if you picture the different neighborhoods in, in town, I think when we start to go down this, and I'll be interested, I want to go forward with it and see what public comment we get, if any. We have some dense neighborhoods in, in town, we have other areas that are not so dense. So if you're in an R2 district, you know, an ADU at all becomes somewhat problematic because those are very small lots. If you have an R1, you start to probably be able to put on something that is going to be the 800 square feet or less. Um, when you start to get into agricultural, let's say, let's talk about the spice rack area of town. You know, those are fairly large lots. I, I could, if you allowed this, you could have completely new structures on those lots that would essentially be detached, small living areas.
Point of inquiry, spice area?
The spice rack, the, the, the... It's an area of town that all the streets are...
That makes sense, I was very confused for a minute, I apologize.
Yeah, it's a new section, I've got to get them to add it on the master plan, the spice rack section of town.
I would look very favorably on that.
And, um, so it's, I almost feel like we're trying to have this global thing that then, I don't know how you would apply it in all the different sections. I also have to tell you, I'm not hearing a, a huge demand for it in town.
We've had quite a few come in.
Have you? How many? What's quite a few?
Well, uh, since I've been here, I think there's been, um, only two or three, but there have been many granted in the past in detached structures. Uh, and the, the reasons, uh, vary, one was on the lake and, um...
I, I, I don't want to know the reasons because as Jim points out, the reason you get today from a planning perspective really should have no bearing because you have no, no control over that reason because it can change at any point in the future. So we're talking about the structure and, and we're talking about the structure.
Ju- just so everyone is clear, um, the conservation agricultural, R1, R2, RSBO1, RSBO, no, RSBO1, those are all special exceptions in those zones for, for what we have now attached. And then RSBO2 and village commercial is a conditional use permit in those two zones. So there's no zone that where someone can just go ahead and build one. The commercial, the flex zone and industrial, they're not permitted at all.
Okay.
So there is some control over that.
Yeah, and to go back to demand for a minute too, um, and Nancy, you'll probably have more insight than I will on this, but I, I think that, um, you know, part of the reason that we haven't, the town hasn't seen as much demand as we might have expected to is because of, and, and this is one of the things we, we're hoping to address with these three items, is that the, there are sometimes significant roadblocks depending upon, um, the steps you need and the costs associated with building an ADU in town. Um, so sometimes people will, uh, you know, maybe construct something that would technically be classified as an ADU, but doesn't necessarily meet the requirements of an ADU or, um, or they'll, they'll come close, they might, they might share a kitchen. Um, there, there are a cou- there are a lot of ways to build something that's very similar or very close to an ADU, but doesn't quite meet the requirements, or just build one and not list it as an ADU.
Right.
Um, and so the, the goal of this is to try, you know, I, I think that reducing some of the barriers to entry for ADUs in Goffstown will bring a lot of those out into the open. And, you know, over, over time too, we've seen a lot of the economic indicators, um, in New England especially and especially Southern New Hampshire with rising housing costs, where these things just become more and more important, um, over time. I mean, e- eventually people will not be able to afford to live in Goffstown under the way, like, it's the, the current character of the town. And while that's a longer-term problem, uh, this, this is designed to stem some of that tide.
Okay, thank you Connor, other board members?
Quiet group.
Quiet group, well, it's after nine o'clock, so...
Past my bedtime.
Well, and, and somebody needs to get somebody...
This is Jim, um, I think it's worth going forward on a hearing with this because I think it's an interesting concept. I, I don't want to, I don't want to throw too much cold water on it, but I'm not, I'm not prepared to support it yet, but I think it's worth discussing. So we can leave it on for the first hearing and see what others say. But, but again, I mean, I think we still have some reservations, I...
All right, well, we'll go forward with it. Connor, why don't you briefly explain what to, the 525, why you're proposing to eliminate that? I think it's sort of self-explanatory, but I want...
Before you move on, is there any other information that you'd like Connor to bring forward for your next hearing or for your first hearing?
I'd like to know how many of these Bedford is allowed.
Excuse me?
Uh, none, we don't allow those kinds of things in Bedford.
Uh, yes, exactly.
You know, and I...
I don't know how many multifamily housing has been built recently in Bedford. We're, we're becoming the overflow area.
Oh, come on, lots Jim, go down to the Bedford Mall.
There has been a lot.
Off of Route 3.
Well, I, I...
I'll take George to discuss this.
Okay.
Yeah, but you don't even see those from the road, you've got to go way back.
Just stop, gentlemen. They've had, have had a fair amount of apartment complexes, which leads to perhaps a discussion at some point as to these mixed-use developments, as to whether or not from an, from a ordinance standpoint, there needs to be some changes made by virtue of the Bedford example and what we've experienced here in town as to requiring development in a certain, um, manner to make sure you get the benefit of the mixed use. But that is a discussion for another day.
And that can be handled by a development agreement.
Right.
Which is not a zone, it's not a zoning issue, that's what I'm saying, all right. Um, so Connor, we're, you're changing 525, which I'm assuming has something to do with your change in 522.
Uh, actually, this one is, is pretty standalone. We're actually, um, eliminating section 525. So section 525 currently states, "No new exterior entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed facing the front of the single-family residence." And we'd basically be looking to strike that. The, the reason behind it is it's some, you know, it's again, going back to reducing the barriers of entry. If there's a, you know, there are a lot of houses that, the, there's another section here, I do not remember the specific section, if someone could refresh my memory, that states that, uh, you know, the construction materials have to match the primary residence, um, which I think...
527.
Thank you.
I just happened to have the page open.
That's perfect, see, we're, we're in sync now. And, and that, that I think is really the, 527 is really the core essence of ADUs, especially in Goffstown, where they need to match the look and feel of the community and the neighborhood that they're in. And I think that 525 is just a little bit too restrictive in terms of, uh, you know, design aspects. By, by freeing up this, this little bit, it will basically allow people to, um, you know, potentially, who, who might be limited by that front door requirement, to potentially address it eas- much easier.
Okay, questions from board members?
This is Jim, I don't recall why we had that in the first place.
I think it was part of the discussions in regards to allowing it, but not changing the layout of the lot, sort of in the perspective of the, the street view of the neighborhood.
I think it, by change, or by eliminating it, it also gives more flexibility to the design if you were to plan your ADU for your elderly parent or relative. Uh, it may be easier to get them through the, the entrance at the front of the house versus having to figure out how to maybe possibly add a side entrance, which may not be as easily accessible as far as, uh, the topo of the land or whatever lots of these homes are, are sitting either up high or down low. So that's another reason for it.
Okay.
Barbara?
Yes, Phil.
Uh, my recollection is the reason, uh, not allowing the entrance facing the road is not to have the appearance of a duplex.
Right, and I would agree with that if you're planning to have the two doors, you know, almost copying each other, so it looks like you have two separate units that are of the same size. But if, if you, you know, we can certainly provide you with photos of lots of ADUs where they're added on and if, if you didn't know it, it would basically just look like, um, an addition for a family room or something like that. And, uh, the doors are not very, they don't, they don't give the illusion that there's another apartment behind it.
Yeah, this one was actually inspired a little bit from my own personal experience in the sense that I grew up in Brookline, New Hampshire, um, and the house that I grew up in actually had two front-facing doors. It wasn't, it was a single family without an ADU, but it was still, it, it, it still looked, you know, it fit in with the, the look and feel of the community, um, and the neighborhood that I grew up in. And no, no one really ever looked, looked at it twice. And there were, there are actually several airhouses on my street that had the same, the same sort of feel. So it just seemed, it... that had the same, the same sort of feel. So, it just seemed, it, it just seemed a little, I don't, I don't want to use the word odd, but it's the word I'm going to choose. And I, you know, as Joanne said, we're, we're just looking to reduce the barrier to entry for ADUs.
There are towns, there are homes scattered throughout town where you see two entrances on the front of the house. A lot of it, it has to do with construction additions and how people do layouts and access, but it's there. So, I understand the proposal to eliminate...
I think the, this Jim, I think the, so the aesthetic component can be better addressed through the special use permit, or special exception, a conditional use permit, rather, than rather, than a blanket prohibition in the ordinance. Ordinances are inflexible, and as Connor suggested and some of the others, this is a, a particularly designed element that it, it reasons why it doesn't apply. So, you put it into the conditions of the conditional use or special exception.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on these proposed changes, five and six? All right, so I'm not hearing anything else, so I'm hearing though that we would go forward for public hearing with all of those at this point, but Joanne, we want information on number one, in regards to exactly what size are we talking about? Because I, none of us have a good feel of how much space you need for a barrel of production.
Okay.
And you're going to call a couple of communities for us on that?
Yes.
All right. Connor, thank you very much for coming and your work on this, and...
Connor's here for one more item.
Yep.
There's one on the bottom of page three.
Oh, okay. Oh, well, that's the, that's the impact fee.
You want to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. So, this next one is a proposal to actually the impact fee schedule, specifically related to accessory dwelling units or ADUs. This one is specifically, it's eliminating the school impact fee for only and strictly ADUs. And the, again, this kind of sticks with our theme tonight of reducing the barrier to entry for ADUs. The school impact fee is the most impactful fee for the, the resident when building an ADU. And from what we found is that in, in most other municipalities across the country, is that ADUs usually don't actually have an impact on the schools. They're not providing, you know, an extra student that will be attending that age group. And usually, that's just strictly because of utility. They're too small to host, you know, a whole family, or, you know, an adolescent. You, there's, there's very few of them where you might be able to fit two bedrooms in. So, we found that the impact is relatively low on those, and while there are other very useful impact fees that a resident has to pay when building an ADU in terms of public safety, parks and recreation, the school one is a rather large inhibiting factor in the cost of building one of these units. So, eliminating it, especially with current enrollment rates at Goffstown, the school I used for this one was Goffstown High School, generally has fluctuated over the last five or six years between a 2%, have been relatively flat, with only a 2% on either side, gain or loss of headcount over the last several years.
Okay. Comments? I mean, we haven't seen a request for a waiver of that fee on ADUs. We haven't heard them. We've only had a couple, so...
There are a lot of gulps, though.
Yeah.
When we tell them the, the impact fee, people are shocked.
We've seen one waiver for the sewer.
Yeah, recently.
Installation fee, which is $2,500 for an ADU.
Okay.
So, on top of this fee, if you're on sewer, it's another $2,500. If you're on septic, obviously. You have to provide a septic design, but you don't have to build a new septic unless your septic were to fail.
Okay.
Barbara, I have a question. This is Jim. Do we, we do not waive these for non-age-restricted apartments? Or rather, unless we waive it, the impact fee applies. Why wouldn't ADU be treated any differently than a multifamily dwelling in an apartment building? Be the same analysis who's likely to live there, but we apply the impact fee to those.
I, I...
I'm not sure. Therefore, why an ADU would be exempt?
Well, I think the idea is an ADU is probably a one-unit event permit, whereas when you're dealing with age-restricted, you're usually looking at a larger number of units in one application. So, you're, if you're trying to streamline the ADU process, you know, you're trying to not have to have these applicants come in front of boards and get the waivers that they need, whereas your age-restricted community is probably here anyways for a apartment.
No, no, I'm speaking of the non-age-restricted apartments. We don't waive it for those. And, and as Connor presented, this exemption would not require that the ADU be age-restricted. It would be any ADU.
Okay.
And the, the reason behind that is because technically, the resident is already paying the school impact fee. Most, you know, if this is going on a single-family home, they've already paid the impact fee for that single-family home. And they're very different from multifamily in, in the name itself, where multifamily implies that there's going to be multiple families, most likely with children. You know, these dwelling units are incredibly limited by size, whereas apartment complexes or individual apartments and multifamilies might be much bigger. The logistics behind that are a lot more difficult to achieve in ADUs. So, we found that the, like, the impact is much lower on the schools than a potential multifamily.
Okay. And our fees, our fees for all impact fees, not just schools, are based on dwelling units, where this, again, is not a separate dwelling unit as far as being able to stand on its own. If someone came in and wanted to construct a single-family house, their impact fee for the schools would be $6,353. So, so they're already paying that amount. If they're adding an ADU, there are several larger homes that are being constructed with ADUs attached. So, then you're adding, let's see here, what does it say?
$38.10 total for the ADU.
$38.10. Where do you see that?
Down at the bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just talking about the school fee right now.
$24.03.
So, if you do a, yeah, it's not broken out. I was, I thought maybe it was, there was another fee for a single-family home with an ADU.
Oh, I see.
As one package, but there isn't that category. So...
And the other thing to point out about ADUs too, is looking a little bit more broadly in New Hampshire. Goffstown actually does their impact fees a little bit differently. From what I've found, we're one of the only towns that does them as a flat rate, as opposed to by square footage. So, like, the city of Lebanon actually does it 87 cents per square foot. And this is, they don't actually have impact fees for accessory dwelling units, so you'll have to pardon my, my liberal use of their ordinance. But, you know, if you have eight, if you have 87 cents per square foot, and let's say if the maximum size in an ADU is 800 square feet, that would come out to $696 total in a school impact fee, which is significantly less than here. Looking at some others, Nashua, the most you would pay for a school impact fee on an entire single-family unit is $3,600. Again, they do that by square foot. It's 50 cents per square foot in Nashua, with the maximum ceiling set of $3,600. And Rochester was one of the, one of the more expensive ones I could find, which was $1.57 per square foot, and that was specifically for attached units.
How much was it in Rochester?
$1.57.
Wow.
Rochester?
Excuse me, Barbara?
Yes, Peter.
Barbara, yes, I've got to step out of the meeting now.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
This, this is Jim. One, I wouldn't trade Rochester schools to Goffstown schools. But second, he has, he has suggested a way to flip the baby and, and have some proportionality based on size, and I certainly would consider that. If it's a, we right now have a one-size-fits-all for all dwellings, that, that does seem to be a disproportionate impact consequence for a small dwelling. I'm, I'm not willing to give them a pass, though, yet, if there's no age restriction, from the age restriction on them. But I understand his comment.
All right. Well, and would this be subject to the zoning ordinance hearing, Joanne?
No, this would be part of the fee schedule, which I've attached. That would just require a public hearing, I believe, in order to change our fee schedule.
So, this is independent from our zoning ordinance proposals?
Correct. We just brought it forward because of the package.
Right, it's all part of the same thing. Okay. I mean, it is sort of interesting to talk it, maybe consider whether we want to do a square-footage basis as compared to a, a unit.
And I will say a plus-one for Goffstown, is our impact fee schedule is very easy to find. Most cities and towns make them incredibly hard to actually find.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, all right. Any other comments or questions on what Connor has proposed? All right, so I think we are talking about going forward with everything that you've presented tonight. Connor, thank you for coming and staying.
Thank you for having me.
Do any planning board members have any other changes that they would like to bring up? The chair actually does. I don't expect that I'm going to get a lot of enthusiasm for this, to go forward with it, but I think the discussion needs to start. I would like to get rid of the open-space development portion of our zoning ordinance. Yeah, well, yeah, I've already heard one gasp. I'm sure they're, they're all over the place. This was adopted almost 20 years ago now, I think. And the open-space areas of town that we were looking at when this was adopted have been long since developed, for the most part, or have got easement, conservation easements on them, or gone into conservation trusts. And the unde- large undeveloped parcels of land, of which we do not have a huge amount, that do not have a plan approved on them, are not very good pieces of property. And by that, I mean, they're not the sort of, you know, forest, field, land that people typically think of when they're talking open space. If we go to the Tibbetts Hill, Tyrell Hill section of town, that was hugely undeveloped when this ordinance, at, at about the time that development, those developments were going in, this, this came forward. This gives a density bonus in development. Houses are being constructed that are bigger than ever, and the construction that goes on, I think, leaves the town worse off. I think if you drive up Shirley Hill Road and go in Head, King, John King Drive, you will see an example of what open-space development is, is creating. And what we have out there are very large home, lovely homes, that people have paid a lot of money for, that are, quite frankly, almost on top of each other, on a hill, on a road that ends in a hammerhead, which is not something that as a planning board, we ever really wanted to do. DPW at one point came, it comes in and says, oh, it's okay for, for, you know, for them, because they can go up and, and plow it. But the benefits that we got as a community out of these developments, I think, is long gone. I think that that development is a problem, and I think that it's an evidence of construction that is not appealing as a community. We talk about the rural character of our community. It does not appear that way, and it leads to the other issue we have come into, are these homeowners associations, which no homeowner wants to be in anymore. And they're completely ineffective from a town resource management standpoint to figure out what's going on in the open space when there is a problem with it. People, you know, pay minimal dues, if at all, in these associations. We have no control over their formation or running. And I think as a community, the benefit of this is not there for us anymore. I think the density bonus is a problem. I think we have issues when we have developable space calculations on large parcels that end up putting proposed buildings or buildings in areas that you would normally not allow in a development. And, you know, I understand wanting to preserve the, the rural character and, and keep open land, but we have a huge, we have one of the highest percentages of conservation land in southern New Hampshire, in the Goffstown 36-acre border. Between the mountains and the lands that have recently been put in conservation trust, it is a huge percentage. And I don't think it, it provides us with the benefit that it is. Now, has anybody had a heart attack, and have they been resuscitated yet?
Valid points. Thank you, Barbara.
I think it's a big issue, and...
I will say that doing research for various open-space subdivisions, a lot of them never even formed an association from the start. And I can't think of one of them that the association has carried forward.
And people don't want to buy in a homeowners association anymore. I mean, builders will tell you that they don't. People do not want a homeowners association. The trade-off was supposedly, you know, DPW would have less roads to maintain, and it would be less expensive for the community, and so developers got a density bonus when, when they do it. And I think we've ended up with developments that frankly have had more development than they would have if they had been developed as, in accordance with standard development. So, I'm sort of interested to hear from anybody else on the call who has a thought on this.
Barbara, this is Jim.
Yeah.
I'm, I had this discussion with another town today. I, I don't, I'm not adverse to the, the concept, but this is put in at a time when we saw a need for it. But that doesn't mean you keep it in forever. It's like some of the growth restriction ordinances that were passed earlier to meet a need that kind of dissipated. But we have seen certain goals that we did want to achieve through the open space. There may be better ways to do it, through, you know, lot sizing or other ways. I, I think we should look at it, because if we're finding that the market is just not working, the demand is incompatible, and we're ending up with projects that we don't really like, then yeah, it's time to revisit it. I, but I don't, I don't think a simple repeal is, is, is the answer. I'd like to see is how we could preserve some of the, the good results, either conservation land or proper lot sizing, before we ax it.
Okay.
Which we have time to do, like, when you get on a horse. But I, so I'm receptive to the discussions, for that one.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I agree with what Jim said, and I, I feel like we need to be careful not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I mean, we've definitely accomplished a lot of goals with this ordinance, and, yeah, sure, we should revisit why we created it and what, what it, what it's gained, but I don't, I'm, I'm not in favor of throwing it out unless we have something that's, I don't know, that's, that's going to some way maybe work better. And I also, I, I'm not sure I disagree with you, Barbara, about, I mean, there's still large parcels out there that could become subdivisions, and, and could, could have some sort of different impact if those houses weren't clustered. I, I don't, I don't look at that John King Drive subdivision. I did drive up there, and I, I, I mean, you're right, the houses are really close together, and, and they're big, but they're, they're selling, and those people are buying those houses knowing that they're going to be looking at their neighbors, so they're not, you know, that's their choice. I mean, we don't have a, we don't have a problem selling houses here in Goffstown. And I also think that part of the appeal to that neighborhood is the fact that there's a huge undeveloped, you know, forested area around them that benefits our community as well as those homeowners. So... So, um, I, I, I wouldn't go so far as to say that these aren't actually successes.
I'm not saying, I, I mean, I think the market is, is driving it, but I, I think that we are not getting the...
We take a full circle on showing that the build-out scenario was, was, I think, brought forward when we were discussing this type of issue. So it'd be useful if that could be retrieved, because it did show the consequences of full build-out with single-family house. It might be useful to have that in front of us when we have the, the discussion on Barbara's proposal.
All right. All right, well, I thought I'd bring it up. I didn't think it would get anywhere for this year, but I do think we need to start talking about it, because we've had some approvals in the past where they have been packed in to get the density. It's been allowed. They haven't necessarily happened, but, you know, I, I think at a certain point, we need to look around and say, we're probably on houses that cut down a few trees to be there, and, um, maybe it's, it's time to reassess. So, thank you, everybody, for that. Anybody else have anything on zoning ordinances? Joanne, do we have any other business tonight?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Phil, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Dave and Jim, give it to one of them. All those in favor, um, I'm, I'm not sure, but they say that I do have to do a roll, so I will start with David.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Gail?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Peter? Oh, Peter left, sorry. Kimberly? And Jim?
Yes, Kimberly.
And Jim? Thank you, everybody. Good night.